We're mostly in the staff, but can you look at maps? The audit report? I have to see. I've got three. Yeah. Man. The report. It's amazing. It's now. Yes. It's excellent.
Oh, wow. That's great. That's a good point. So, it's amazing that we have the community. Yeah. It's all right. It's wonderful. It's wonderful. Wow. I have time.
I tell you what, Corey, I really am impressed with just buying the building. You already set up. I don't know how much time you have.
It's on you now. You can't like turn it down. You're trying to think. Yeah.
Yeah. I've got to put them just like screw it. It is a dish. You got like butter and it's broken. I'm serious. I'm casual. Yeah. I like my. Probably. Just something to do with the property. Nothing to say. I guess like the things that you're doing. Yeah. Yeah. You know, I had to say this. I started for one. I started with me and so. Like. It's not that fun. I'm like. It's. I'm. It's stupid. I'm sure it's. You should take it to the condition. It's like. I go on a stage and they show. It's. Um.
We'll call this meeting to order and ask you to please stand if you are able for the plenary details.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Please be seated. Welcome to the Linsburg City Council meeting of July seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three. We appreciate your attendance here, and we will move directly to item number three, which is public input. Uh, we do have, uh, three items of business on public input this evening. I want to remind that generally in the public, uh, input section, we hear from those companies who wish to speak, um, and we generally don't, um, debate the issue. Uh, and so if you keep that in mind, we'd appreciate it, and, uh, we will begin with, uh, Mr. David Carlson. Thank you, Mr. Carlson, for being here, and I want to let you know that your comments have been printed and distributed to, uh, the council.
That's right. So I don't really want to reread what you already have. I just wanted to feel some feeling as to the church council relative to your willingness to participate in finding solutions to this problem locally.
Sure. And, and Mr. Mr. Carlson, you were here a couple of years ago.
That's right.
And, uh, understanding that, uh, some bags were, at that time, were developed, and I, I.
Well, we, we met with Justin Eas and encouraged him to do it, and so he did the work of preparing the bags, but we did, um, most of the selling.
I see. Okay. Um, I'm going to, if it's okay with you, I'm going to have our city administrator just give us, uh, a few sentences update on that, uh, if we could.
Sure thing. Um, so in two thousand and nineteen, as Mr. Carlson mentioned, um, he brought us to city council. He worked with our assistant city administrator, Lucas, at the time, on this project, um, and at that time, council, um, approved the motion to purchase one thousand bags, which Roxy has in front of her, and she wants to fill that up. But these are the bags that Mr. Carlson is referring to. Um, so we purchased a thousand of those bags and, um, also worked with an artist for that artwork and paid the artist for that, and then the bags have been sold to local merchants throughout town, um, at the city's cost. Um, it was not a moneymaker for the city. It was at cost, and then they've been able to resell those bags at their locations. So initially, there was a thousand bags purchased. We currently still have two hundred in possession at City Hall. Um, so if merchants would like to purchase those, um, to have in their stores from now through, you know, as long as the bags would last them, um, certainly in a home especially here, that would be, um, very appropriate and beneficial. So, um, that's where the quantity of the bags stands now in relation to, um, when they were purchased in two thousand and nineteen.
I think the important thing is that we realize that, um, the question of plastic bags is something that we all are aware of is what is happening, but I think it's a matter of people being conscious of the fact that it's a matter of establishing new habits, and I think that it would be helpful if the city council has some method by which they could, uh, participate in personally using cloth bags, but also to ways by which, uh, we can encourage our population to, uh, also, uh, use cloth bags. The, uh, whites have been cooperative. They have put that box out. I don't know if you've seen that, where people have volunteered to put cloth bags for people to take, and, um, if you have cloth bags at home that you're not using, or a lot of them, I, we have many of them, we contributed, I would encourage you to put, um, your own bags in, um, in the box. The, uh, our Lutheran church has, uh, used, um, T-shirt, converted T-shirts into cloth bags, which we used as a part of our, our food bank, but, um, the food could answer, and so I love that's a very clever way of using old T-shirts, but, uh, hopefully there will be some other creative ideas, and we encourage the city council to discuss it and to see what you would be able to do. I'm just leaving it at that.
Thank you, Mr. Carlson, uh, for being here, um, this evening and bringing up that timely subject, and rest assured that we'll take that under advisement and look, um, at possibilities for the council.
Hi, um, Dean Bales is here as well as, uh, Karen, uh, August Suzanne.
Thank, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Bales, for being here as well. Thanks, thanks very much.
Thank you.
Um, secondly, I will call on Mr. Brian Freeman.
Welcome, Brian. Thank you. Um, I wrote some notes because I am not a public speaker. I can restore buildings, but I cannot speak publicly, so, um, I'm here tonight specifically just to talk to you guys about the proposed appearance guidelines, and, um, so I'm here to make requests that the council consider not voting to approve the new appearance guidelines as they're written, but rather table them for further discussion and wait to vote on them, uh, until they can be refined in a way that they're not opinion-based, but rather actual guidelines. Uh, this is a good start at establishing a set of guidelines. However, there are many parts of the proposed guidelines that are actually defined guidelines, and unfortunately, those need some serious revisions. Um, and then there's also probably the most substantial part of the guidelines that are proposed are just simply not guidelines. They're opinions. Uh, they're just, um, very subjective, opinion-based, um, writing. So, um, if the council would consider, I'm not reading my entire thing, by the way, it's just the words in red. Um, so if the council would consider tabling this vote, uh, to a future date until this can be developed a little bit more and refined, um, and make it a much cleaner, simpler, easier to understand process for those needing to apply to modify the exterior of a building, install a sign, um, et cetera, I'd actually like to offer my assistance, um, in my professional opinion, in ways that the ordinance could be written, uh, to make them easier to understand and easier to actually enforce as a guideline. Um, I really do believe in, uh, in downtown Linsburg and Linsburg as a whole. Um, hopefully you guys know maybe some of the things I've done in thirteen years I've been here. Um, and I really do want it to grow and expand and get better and bigger and, uh, and just thrive, so I really want to be part of the solution and, and still help develop this, this great city that I'm living in. So, um, I really do believe that working together, we can all do better than this and make it something very understandable and, uh, simple to follow. So, thank you very much for listening.
Thank you very much, Brian. Thanks you for being and for all the things that you have been involved in, which is are numerous. So, thank you so much. Uh, thirdly, we have Mike Dreyer, who is here this, uh, this evening. Welcome, Mike.
Thank you.
So, Mike, what is your complaint?
Uh, I've got a lot, but I need to start with a compliment. I'm not quite as handsome as the gentleman that went before, but his haircut is fantastic. So, this is part of the annual process. Um, first off, on behalf of the agency, we want to say thank you for, again, allowing us to be the representative for the city's insurance. Um, the program with EMC is the municipality program, and when that program is profitable, there's a dividend that comes back to the city. I didn't want to hold the check for as long as it would have taken to get here, so I've already given that to David, but the, the dividend check given back to the city this year was nineteen thousand, six hundred and twenty-eight dollars and fifty-seven cents. So, in the current market that we are for insurance right now, profitability is hard to come by, so the work that the, the employees of the city have done to help and the fact that we've avoided hail for a little while is, is also helpful, but just wanted to say thank you to you all for the opportunity to work with the city.
Thank you, Mike. Thanks very much, and, and we appreciate that and work with you for us, and, uh, it's better that you brought nineteen thousand dollars than a bill for nineteen thousand.
That'll come in my English.
We appreciate that. Thank you, Mike. Um, I believe that's all that we have signed up for public input this evening. We will now move on to item number four. Um, Madam Administrator, are there amendments to the agenda this evening?
There are no amendments.
Thank you. We will now move to item number five, the mayor's report, and I just want to say a couple of things. First of all, we're, of course, going to be saying goodbye to Jordan, and, uh, we appreciate all of the effort that Jordan's put in, uh, into the city of Linsburg in the last couple of years, and, uh, we appreciate it. We miss him and wish him, uh, Caroline, the best as they move forward into other, other places in their lives, and, uh, this enduring legacy will be felt here for many years. Thank you, Jordan, very much. Um, secondly, the, um, on Friday, it is the Parks and Recreation Professionals Day, and I really want to thank Noah and Lauren and all of the staff at Parks and Recreation for the great upkeep that they do at the swimming pool, golf course, the parks, programs that they are involved in. Uh, if you are like me, I spend a lot of time, uh, going through the parks, I spend time on the trail, and it's just, it's incredible amount of land, and it's all kept nicely, and, uh, we appreciate them very much, and I wanted to express that on behalf, thanks on behalf of, of the city and the citizens of the city. Uh, with that, we will move to item number six, which is the consent agenda. There are three items on consent agenda. Item A is the approval of the minutes for the regular meeting July the third, two thousand and twenty-three. Item B, payroll ordinance number five, four, three, four, and item C, the purchase order ordinance number five, four, three, five. These items are routine. They are enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion unless a council member so requests. Is there a motion to pass the consent agenda?
So. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Are there questions on the motion?
Maybe. Quick one. Uh, David, there's a lot of checks this month. I didn't see him, so I didn't.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion and a second. We will ask our city clerk to please call roll.
Councilmember Ford.
Yes.
Presley.
Yes.
Eagle.
Yes.
Bruce.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Gann.
Yes.
Thank you, council. Um, motion passes, and, uh, thank you, uh, Roxy, and, uh, I want to thank, or I want to welcome Councilmember Smith, who has come from a long ways today, and, uh, he's been flying around all over the state, so we appreciate that he got back safely and, uh, thank him for his attendance. We will now move to item number seven. Madam Administrator, are there appointments this evening?
There are no appointments.
Thank you. Item number eight, committee reports. Are there committee reports?
Yes. Jordan, um, has committee reports for planning commission and design review board, um, but those also could be given under old business.
Okay. Jordan, what would you prefer to do?
Okay. Thank you, Jordan. Good evening, mayor. Good evening, council. Uh, thank you for the mayor's report. Uh, uh, just to quickly say, I've really enjoyed living here and working here, and we will miss this place, so thank you for the opportunity to have some kind of impact here. Uh, it's been, it's been really great. So, just a quick committee report, the planning commission and the design review board met for a special joint meeting, uh, last Tuesday, July eleventh. It feels like it was forever ago, but it was not. It was just six days ago. Uh, they met on a couple of items. Uh, one of the items was a preliminary, a proposed preliminary replat at Stockholm Estates. Uh, so the developers, uh, Stockholm Estates developers were proposing to, um, make the lots slightly bigger, uh, out at Stockholm Estates to allow for just some better configuration and new housing, um, as well as kind of has to do with some issues with side yard and backyard setbacks, so to be able to build a little bit easier and also, I use a point of feedback from prospective buyers that they would like a little bit bigger lot sizes, uh, so they proposed that. Uh, that was approved unanimously by the planning commission. Kind of an exciting, uh, piece of news. They did show in that preliminary replat that they set aside a parcel of land for a potential new city park, uh, so that is, uh, in that preliminary replat as well for, uh, the city to consider as part of a, a future item. Uh, so that was passed. The next steps moving forward, they need to go to an official replat, so that'll be another planning commission meeting. Their goal is to break ground on phase two of Stockholm Estates. Originally, it was going to be phase two and phase three. They combined phase two and phase three together, so it's just going to be one more phase. Uh, they would like to break ground, uh, I believe, early next year, uh, on the infrastructure for that. So, in order to do that, uh, they will be, I imagine, uh, looking for the extension of the current RHID program onto phase two. That's something, uh, to look forward to. That's, uh, for the next community development director. They'll be working on that. The other two items that were discussed, uh, together by the, the planning commission and the design review board, uh, were the appearance guidelines, which were, uh, adopted with revisions based on feedback, uh, not adopted, but suggested for adoption, voted for adoption by city council based on feedback, and also an update to the mobile food vending, um, policy manual. Uh, so the updates, uh, were suggested and also adopted unanimously by the planning commission. Uh, that item is not on the agenda, but I happily answered questions about what was on that in case you'd like me to, um, but if not, that is, um, that was the extent of the items that were presented after meeting last Tuesday.
Thank you, Jordan. Other questions for Jordan from the council?
I'm looking for your suggestions.
Since that development's so far ahead of schedule, does it have a timeline where they'll actually come on the tax rules? Is it going to be accelerated also? In other words, will the program be paid off per area? Is that date certain? I don't recall on that one.
Um, yeah, so it, it could be simply because there's more development going on than they expected, so basically the baseline year for the RHIDs, the Rural Housing Incentive District, which is a tax increment, uh, a, a tax increment incentive program, uh, I think the baseline year was two thousand and twenty-one, so all additional property taxes generated on phase one of that would be refunding the development of the costs that are in that, that agreement for up to twenty-five years or until they're paid back in full, whichever comes first. So it could be twenty-five years, but there's been enough development out there that it's possible that it could be paid off sooner than twenty-five years. So, hard to say, but potentially.
Further questions? Okay, seeing no further questions. Thank you, Jordan. And, uh, that will bring us to item number nine, old business, which is, uh, there are three ordinances, but they are all related to item A, appearance guidelines, and, um, before I call Jordan up, uh, again, I want to acknowledge that the meeting, the planning commission, designer review board, uh, met and had a very good crowd last Tuesday, and appreciated everybody that was involved, uh, no matter how people felt, uh, and, uh, I, I just, I was struck by the, um, by the members that were present and the good questions and comments and the quality of it. It was really, I was, I was kind of impressed that we can get people who are that smart to come and serve for free on a, on a, um, commission and board, so thank you to all of them. Um, with that, um, I will once again call on Jordan, our community development director for appearances guide, appearance guidance.
All right. Just to reiterate that, uh, that was probably the most heavily attended planning commission, designer review board meeting, uh, that I have been a part of since I've been here. Uh, it was actually really exciting and validating in a lot of ways. A lot of times you, you have these meetings and people don't come out, and you'd like more engagement, and it's not there. This was not that. This is a really great example of, I think, how democracy should work, which is with public participation and excitement and engagement. Uh, everybody's feedback was quality. Everybody was respectful. Decorum was maintained. Uh, it was a really, it was a really good meeting, uh, so, and, and I think produced a lot of good feedback, too. So just background a little bit, I know you all know this, uh, so maybe this is a bit more for public record, but I'll augment as well. So, my department has been working in coordination with the planning commission and the design review board since last November to produce appearance guidelines for the regulation of building architecture and modifications to the C, C-two retail business district and signage and public art within the district, within all districts, uh, in the city of Linsburg. After nearly three decades and multiple attempts to develop in past guidelines, the planning commission and designer review board unanimously voted to recommend the appearance guidelines version three point oh with modifications at the special meeting held on July eleventh, two thousand and twenty-three. The appearance guidelines version, uh, three point oh are built on three foundational elements designed to encourage creativity within guidelines, or what are defined as boundary conditions in the appearance guidelines. The first element is described as community-approved design. Community-approved design was developed through public feedback and online surveys made available to the community and is designed to act as inspiration for applicants. Importantly, community-approved design is not mandatory design, uh, but should be reviewed and revised a minimum of once every four years to reflect current design preferences. So just to give you a little bit of background, the first version of community-approved design, that's in the appearance guidelines, got seventeen, uh, survey responses, primarily from downtown businesses. I think everybody on the planning commission and design review board was in agreement when they said that number isn't reflective of the community at large. It's really not a large enough data sample. Like, if you were, if you were looking for relevant statistics in, in a study, that would not be a high enough sample. What they did think, uh, was that it was, it was a good place to start, but they wanted to put it back out to the community and, uh, review it again and modify the appearance guidelines once, uh, more feedback was in place. So just so you know, in the next newsletter that's going to come out, I believe in August, is that correct? Uh, the survey is going to be reopened for two months until the end of November, uh, and it will be sent out as part of the newsletter to everybody in town, uh, so everybody who gets the newsletter. I think that will give better data, uh, and that's what the planning commission suggested, by the way. They, they wanted it to go back out in the newsletter. That'll be, that'll give better data and, and more legitimate data for community-approved design, um, but they did feel comfortable in this, uh, in this version to say, this is a good place to start, but we want to take the opportunity to continue to improve this over time, and I think that's an orientation that they all feel is important, uh, which is also why that section in there that says should be reviewed a minimum of one times every four years, uh, which is to say at least once, but not just once. Uh, this can be updated and improved over time. So that's, that's kind of where the community-approved design sits and going forward, what the process would be for getting more input. The second element is described as the design principles, which define the characteristics, the characteristics of unacceptable design Linsburg. So when the principles are formulated with a do not sentence framing, they become a set of guidelines or boundary conditions. Applicants are asked not to violate these design principles with their proposed design. So there were a number of things in consideration here, and I think design principle one was primarily, uh, the item that, uh, most people either had concerns about or questions about in the meeting, but also in this meeting a couple of weeks ago. Um, just to, just to give a little bit of history and background as to why that policy approach was taken, um, so just referencing those three previous attempts over the, the three previous decades, the thing that consistently, uh, hung up the process was the selection of colors and defining, uh, defining what design should be. Uh, I think that spurred a lot of conversation and a lot of arguments, and there's a lot of creative people in town, and people didn't feel like they wanted to be, uh, constrained to a specific color palette, uh, or to a specific design selection, say like traditional Swedish design or something. So this, the boundary conditions are specifically designed to strike a middle ground, saying, this is what's unacceptable, don't do that, but we're not telling you that you have to use a certain color palette or do a certain Swedish motif or use a certain type of architecture, uh, allowing for the ability to be creative with some suggestions that are certainly, uh, discretionary. There's a discretionary element to this, and the only way that you eliminate discretion in this process is to specifically define what design should be. I think this is just based on the feedback. That process failed three times, and that's why the discretionary element is still included in the boundary conditions and why that approach was taken. Uh, but what the, uh, what the planning commission and designer review board did take into consideration was there was a suggestion of, uh, classic or historic color palettes, and so if you look into the definitions of inappropriate or too many colors, there's a line in there that says, uh, it should be like encouraged but not required for people to consider using like a historic color palette or colors that are reasonably similar in hue. Um, so that's just, that gives people a little bit more direction. They don't have to use those historic colors, uh, but they can, and they can use that for design inspiration. And the third element includes the ability to request a variance, to venture beyond the boundary conditions, which may become necessary given a specific set of circumstances. So this was actually really interesting. Uh, we had public feedback at the meeting, uh, where, uh, somebody came up, uh, and said, I could give an argument why City Hall should be painted with seven colors as opposed to the four or five, uh, and then a member of the designer review boards, uh, very appropriately, that's why the variance process is in place. It's to say that if you can make an argument why, uh, a design should be more complex than less complex, that is the perfect use for variance, and that's why it's in place. Um, and this, uh, gentleman spoke earlier today, has credentials, doing historic renovations in design and doing great work, so it definitely makes sense why somebody, uh, of his professional expertise and ability would be able to make a sign that, that goes beyond the boundary conditions. Uh, I think something, something in terms of the, the background of the inspiration here, uh, part of the inspiration that was used to define some of these, uh, limits, like the limits on color, were influenced by the official design principles that are adopted by Sweden, the country of Sweden, which has design criteria that they use, and it's probably available online, and one of those design principles is simplicity. So simplicity is the default with the ability to go above and beyond as creative as you want in a variance process. So the appearance guidelines three point oh were designed to encourage creativity found within the community without being unnecessarily prescriptive. The policy approach aims to strike a middle ground between limited oversight and absolute oversight, creating the conditions for better design outcomes and voluntary compliance. We've talked about this a bunch. So the appearance guidelines versions three point oh were formulated with the intention of protecting the authenticity. the authenticity and integrity of Little Sweden, of the Little Sweden USA brand, while also encouraging thoughtful, creative, and professional design that builds upon Linsburg's storied history and vibrant culture. And I think if you read the original code that talks about appearance guidelines and the need for the Design Review Board, it references a few times the need to maintain a set of standards to protect, to protect the visual characteristics and culture and history that exists in this place, which I think what this is attempting to do is to say, we've adopted this brand, this, this identity, Little Sweden USA. How can we do something to make sure that we protect its authenticity and its character without letting it get too far out of hand, but still encouraging creativity as it's so important to the vitality and prosperity of everybody at Linsburg? So the recommendation, as motioned by the Planning Commission and Design Review Board jointly, is a motion to approve the Appearance Guidelines version 3.0 as recommended by the Planning Commission and Design Review Board and the associated ordinances adopting the new policy into City Code.
Thank you, Jordan. Counsel, we will now open it up to questions to Jordan from the council. I'm not taking any motions at this time, but questions. Councilmember Hudson.
I'm not really clear what Brian's concerns were at that point. Obviously, he requested that we table this for time being. He's not here. I'm going to ask you to interpret some of those concerns if you may.
And let me, thank you, thank you, Councilmember. And I want to point out, this is one of those things where, you know, Mr. Freeman asks to, to speak, we have public input. It's sometimes not the most ideal place to have somebody, and I, I get that. In general, when we get into a place like this, we're not, we're not having people come up and speak, and it kind of puts them at a disadvantage. I appreciate your question, and frankly, Jordan, I would appreciate if you could outline that, outline that or other things that you interpreted from last, or last week.
Sure. Yeah, as well as his points that he made today. So he made, so he made, I would say, basically two points and an appeal to more inclusion in the process. So his first point is about it being opinion-based versus it being more prescriptive. So he talks about the orientation of the design principles, including what he says. He says it's not guidelines. They're not the design principles. It's a set of opinions. What I would say to that is, that is true insofar as opinions are a part of the discretionary process of the board. If you take away the discretion of the board, you don't even need a board. There's no point in having a board, actually. That could just be interpreted clearly in code and by somebody in my office. So the extent to which, I would say, Brian is asking it to be prescriptive is what he's saying is adopt a set of colors. What he suggested was the Benjamin Moore and the other, there was maybe Sherwin-Williams or something has a historic color palette that they've adopted. It's like 191 colors that are considered historic colors that he uses in buildings. And to adopt these, eliminate the first four design principles, because it gets to the point of those design principles anyway if you just adopt a set of colors. I would argue that isn't true, actually. The only thing that that would do is create a set of colors that you could select from, but it doesn't really address the points of style, theme, or consideration of others. It doesn't discuss typeface or font selections. It just says that you can use a set of colors. It doesn't say that the design should be appropriate at all. So that's, I think, his point, is one is that it should be, it should be less discretionary. It should be more prescriptive, getting into the old versions of the policy that I described earlier as having tried and failed three times over, over three decades. I don't think it's a bad idea, though, to suggest a color palette. And I think it, it really belongs in the space of community-approved design, which is to say, put those color palettes out there and say, what do you think of this? Like if this were in Linsburg, would you approve of this? This is something that you would suggest to somebody making a design. And if it hits that 65% threshold on the Likert scale format, as with the, the other stuff, it just gets included in community-approved design and say, these are some architectural types that people approve of. These are some, these are some types of signage. These are the types of, you know, public art murals that people kind of like stylistically. And here are some colors that people like here, and here are some colors that people don't. I think, like, like quite seriously, you could go in any direction. One, if you want to go that direction, I think it, in just hearing the feedback, I think it will gum up the process unnecessarily and make enough people upset that this will, this will probably go nowhere again. But I like having the guidance of it personally. But, but just to say again, the, the decision to go for a principle-based approach and not a prescriptive approach was an intentional policy choice by the board. And that was reflected over and over in meetings, as well as the feedback. The other thing, I believe he said something else.
The definitions.
Well, he, he talked about, he talked about the need for, for something better and the need to be a part of the solution in offering out those professional services. I think that's really great. I think the more public input that we get, generally, the better you can triangulate around a situation and get a better sense of what reality actually is in any sort of policy issue situation. I think that this is a good place to start, but not a good place to finish. Appearance Guidelines should adopt to the times, and they should get better with time, which is the point of the review process. I don't think this is a perfect document, and I don't think anybody in the Planning Commission or the Design Review Board would make that argument. I think what they're saying is, is that without any Appearance Guidelines in place, everything is an opinion without any boundaries. Like if you don't, if you would like less discretion currently, it is all discretion. All discretion, no boundaries. This is a place to start, a place to move forward from. And I think his, his appeal to be a part of that solution is one that should be listened to in further iterations of this policy. That's my take.
Further questions for Jordan?
So my, my one big question would be that this seems like there's a process that no matter what you're doing, you're going to have to go through this. So somebody like Freeman, who deals with a lot of buildings downtown and routinely painting and putting up signs and doing things like this, you're going to constantly have to do artist renderings of what he's going to do with the colors, submit them, wait for approval, to have a meeting, to go to a meeting, to sit down, to already do something that's colored and in a style that the city wants. It's a heck of a lot of bureaucracy to some people that are already doing what everybody wants them to do. I mean, was there anybody that voiced a concern about just the sheer amount of no exceptions? There's no, oh, if you do it this way, we don't even ask, or? Like everybody literally wants to handpick every single one that comes through?
I guess I'm not understanding the last part of the question. What are you talking about, the no exceptions?
It says there are no exceptions. You have to do the standard application. You have to go through the design modification board. Like it has to have all of this stuff every single time someone does that.
Sure. That, that part was not brought up, although I think that I, if you're asking me to interpret, and, and this is my interpretation, I would say that this type of document generally is not the kind of process that Brian, he, he gets, he's a part of it, but he's, he's not really the concerning, he's not really the element of concern that this addresses. I think what this is designed to address is design that is at the top end. Like if you were, if you were, I think a good way of thinking this is the Swedish concept of laga, right? Like not too much, not too little, just right. So you've got on this end, you've got not too much, and on this end, you've got, you've got way too much, right? And somewhere in the middle, you've got laga. I think what this is addressing are these corner elements, and I think what Brian typically does always falls within this space. And so I think his concern about getting, being brought into this process is that he's going to have to prove his design in a way that he maybe didn't have to before, even though everybody really loves his design. That's my take, my personal take. What I'll say about the standardization of the process is this. We get, the Design Review Board gets applications in varying quality from all of the different applicants, and it makes it very difficult for them to make a decision, because some folks will produce a rendering that's very good, and some folks will produce an idea on a piece of paper that's written out that's not very well documented, and it's hard for them to make a decision. By creating a standard application, it creates uniformity that helps them make a better decision, but it also creates equity between applicants. So some applicants don't have to go, some applicants don't end up doing too much, and some applicants don't do too little. You're creating a space where everybody has to do the same thing. Fundamentally, it's to help the Design Review Board make better decisions. In my time as the Secretary of the Design Review Board, I've only done two, two applications. No, I think it was three. Three applications in which Brian was involved. Two of them were signs. One of them was the bakery. One of them was Sister Bojangles signage. And the other was the exterior of the building over here, which was formally put on the dock. Both of those were approved fairly quickly and without issue. So, yeah, I mean, that's the extent, that's the extent of my take on that.
Further questions? Councilmember Peterson?
I have more comment than question. First of all, thanks to, to you for all your work pulling this together. When I came to the meeting that night, I kind of compared the nebulous that we were at before was kind of funneled into something that we can finally discuss. And I appreciate yours and the Committee of the Design Review Board's efforts on this. That evening, two, the two business owners that testified, all, both, full disclosure, I was one of the two. We really had some concern over the terminology, the tacky, garish, amateurish. And I think Brian alluded to that as well. Design Review Board, am I correct, voted to keep that language in there for us to consider tonight?
They did, yes.
Okay. And then the other question or comment I had, it's kind of tough to pile on to what Brian, or Mr. Freeman was saying, was the subjective nature of this. And that was some of my concern as well, is some of the terminology, say tacky, use of themes are unimaginative or kitsch. Who's going to decide what unimaginative is? I, I don't know what that means. As a business owner, I would not have any idea, and, or building owner. A little worried about promoting a tourist trap-type atmosphere. Who's going to define what that is? Is it kind of pornography? You don't know, can't define it, but you know when you see it. I don't know. But that type of thing, garish, garish, excessively or disturbingly vivid. I'm not sure what that means. Offensively or distressingly bright. What's offensive to one may be blundered by another. Or tastelessly showy. I'm not sure how that could be defined as well. Amateurish, unprofessional or poor quality. Again, how do we define poor quality or unprofessional? I think a lot of this, just a little bit of fine tuning would make a lot of sense. A lot of this could be used, but again, the subjective nature of it, I know we can make exceptions, but as soon as you make one exception, it sets precedent, and then we may have guidelines that are not worth much if we, if we always make exceptions. But I think, I say all that, but we were really close, I think, but I just don't know, in my opinion anyway, why there. But I think the subjectivity of it, I echo what Mr. Freeman was saying on that, the concerns a little bit. But mostly, my biggest concern I had was the terminology. I just hated the thought of, of a business owner who's purchased property or is wanting to renovate property, comes to the committee, comes to the city and says, here's my idea, and it gets rejected. And, and the reason why is that someone's got to tell them that you thought it was tacky or her, or garish or amateurish. And I would just, I just don't feel comfortable the city of Linsburg telling a business owner that they're being tacky or garish or amateurish. That's, that's kind of my concern.
When I said that last meeting, and I, I feel the same way. Like I really feel like it's like, it sounds to me like a bunch of junior high people are getting together and saying, I'm sorry, you're not cool. That's what that terminology says it to be. I mean, it really sounds like a group of mean girls. Oh, you're tacky, you're garish. It's really, when I read that, that is the feeling that I get. And I, I can't imagine in a policy manual working out those terms in here. I mean, that's crazy. There are half the other ways to describe it.
So do you mind if I ask, Councilmember Peterson, is this a good time to suggest our conversations after the meeting?
I brought, I, I did come up with a workaround of that and send it to the Chair, Staff, and the Committee. I don't know if the Committee saw it or not, but after hearing Brian's comments and discussion with others, I felt like maybe that was, or weren't quite there in my suggestions. That will alleviate a lot of my concerns, but not all of my concerns.
If I could, I'm, I'm going, just for clarification for the council, I'm going to ask our city attorney. Would it, just as options, I'm not suggesting anything, but would there be an option? The way I see this, and you correct me if I'm wrong, the council could pass this as is this evening. The council could also table this, but would a third option of just not taking action? And we could bring it up again at the next meeting or?
Absolutely, yes.
I, and, and thank you. Thank you very much, Zach. I appreciate it. I want, you know, I want to, I think we all agree, whatever you decide, counsel this evening, we agree that the, the, Jordan and the planning and zoning that have worked on these guidelines, you know, that's, we want to respect that. But I also realize that you may decide, let's give it a little more time to, to consider it. And that might be a third option. Thank you. Any questions?
Well, are we, are we still on the point of asking Jordan, are we moving into the debate?
We are, we are, you are still.
Okay, I don't, I don't have any questions for Jordan, but I would like to be recognized when we get into the debate.
Okay, that's, well, you can, you can certainly do that now if you'd like to. That's, I don't want to restrict.
Well, well, no, not necessarily. I, I guess I just wanted to know, to what extent are people's objections to the actual words tacky, garish, and amateurish compared to the information that's given there? Now, I think Corey, in your remarks, you, you took exception to some of the actual things in the definition. So I'm wondering maybe how others feel about that, because I think one, one thing we can't avoid is that a policy like this has a judgment associated with it. And we, we want that judgment because we're trying to maintain a standard. And so you can't reach a standard without setting some type of expectations. But having said that, we all know that they are, they are subjective. Not everyone is going to feel the same about them. So I think that might be one way of sort of tackling this succinctly would be, is it literally just tacky, garish, and amateurish, or is it the things that follow that? Because I frankly don't see how we could have a policy that would be effective if we don't have some description of what, of what, what we're not, what we, what is not acceptable to, to us as a community. So, and I, and so to, to that end, I am somewhat in agreement about the words tacky and garish. Certainly on first read, I was like, that's cra, I'm so surprised that that's going to appear in City Code. But, but if you ask me for an alternative, I'm not really sure that I can come up with one. And I don't have a problem with the text that comes after. I mean, I, I do, I think that a committee like this is going to have a sense of what's imaginative or kitsch. I mean, I do, I think that a committee like this is going to have a sense of what's imaginative or kitsch. I think it's pretty clear what a caricature of Swedish symbolism and folk art is compared to actual folk art. And I think it's, it's, I can, I can identify with something that's kind of more tourist trap versus authentic to our town. So, so if you're just taking that one as an example, the descriptions work for me. I don't love tacky, but I don't know if it's worth the delay that, of implementing this policy that has been so, so, so much worked on by the committee and agreed to, and they did hear these comments, and still opted to go forward with it. I'm just not sure that it bothers me enough to really want to delay it substantially.
So while you were talking, what, I do have a problem with boards after it. I think they're, my whole issue is I feel like it's disrespectful. I feel it's disrespectful to the people that are putting in an application. That's what the definitions and the words are to me.
Okay.
The amateurish and like unprofessional or, you know, not high enough quality ones really raises concerns to me. Because let's say you have an older business person in downtown, you know, and they're wanting to have somebody normal that they've done business with a long time. They might have party glasses and paint their business five years ago or whatever, and he's going to use normal colors. But he isn't some fancy perfect painter, I mean, so is that a problem? Does your sign have to be done by Steve Shugrind? But if it's done at your garage, it's not okay? I mean, because it's not professionally done, you did it yourself, but if Steve did, it's okay? Like, it's just too much, like, variable on that part, on the whole quality situation and stuff. Especially, how do you judge the quality of art?
Again, the way the process is designed, the person, when they fill out their, their application, they describe why their, why their design does not take, does not oppose those principles. So they have the opportunity to present their perspective on why they designed it the way they did. Do you really think?
If I can add camera words again, well, that was not offensive to them. I'm just kidding. Sorry, I have 20 minutes in the last meeting, so.
I mean, I think they fit in there, my design does not, and then you look at the things in there and you say, well, I came up with, this is a novel design, I came up with myself, it's consistent with the art at Shirley Mall. I mean, I think there are ways of answering it, but I don't know. I, I think we're pulling ourselves down into the same eddy that has gone on for 20 years. And we got to get something out there, see, give it a, take it for a ride, and then it's, it's a living document. It can be edited after it's been in use for a little bit, and I just, I just don't want to see it, you know, keep going forever and ever.
Well, to that point, again, not suggesting what you might want to do, but if you took no action, then you discussed it this time, think it over, and you've got, you'll come back to it the next meeting.
Maybe just quick follow-up, but then, yeah, maybe on the process first. If we take no action, is there any type of message sent to the Design Review Board that we would like to see some amendments made? Taking no action, the same thing that just come back again?
Yeah. So, because this is Jordan's last day, and he is the liaison to the Plan Commission Design Review Board, it would then fall upon another staff member or a delegate to take the feedback of council back to the Design Review Board at a meeting. They do not have a meeting scheduled for July because they met last week. So their next meeting would be the fourth Tuesday of August, unless we call a special meeting, which we could do. So that would be the process, is we would take any revisions that you suggest or feedback or call a special meeting. And then they would, they would hear that feedback and come back then to a future council meeting based on whatever action.
And then the other thought was, again, we've been operating for decades without any guidelines. So waiting another month or a few weeks or two months, whatever, I don't see the harm in that personally. If we're going to do it, I hope we do it right. Perception wise, once this draft was out, we did receive attention and participation from the community providing input. I'm not sure, I think the input was heard, but it definitely wasn't considered because we have the same thing that we had before, input. So just to have a little time to at least consider the input from the business owners that came to testify and one of the major construction people in town that's, I think, done 30% of the buildings downtown. I just feel a big poor policy to just blast this through without consideration of those comments.
Can I make, can I be recognized to make comments? Is that fair? Okay. So, if I were, okay, so this is my last day, right? And just to say, I don't, I don't have personal stake in this, I am seriously just conveying as well as I can the best, the best, you know, summary of the considerations and context for these conversations. A couple of things. So, in this conversation, there's some concern about the discretionary element, but it seems to be that the primary concern is around the appropriateness of the wording in Design Principle 1. So if somebody were to take feedback to the Design Review Board and the Planning Commission, is the feedback that you would like it less discretionary? Or is it actually okay to be discretionary if the terminology was more appropriate?
Second one for me.
I think the discretionary or subjective part could maybe be tightened up just a little, but I don't think it's dramatic, wouldn't be a dramatic change. Basically, based on what I've heard in the conversation in the last six days.
Personally, I'd prefer something that's more, like Brad Freeman said, a guideline said, if you do it within this, you're good to go. If you're outside of that, then you have to go to the Design Review Board to get permission to be.
Well, that is how it's things. There's a, there's a thing that if you meet all the requirements, it can go straight through the Community Development Director and doesn't go to the Design Review Board. Isn't that already part of the process?
That's correct. And just to say that, that you would not, you would always still have to go through the Design Review Board regardless and get a permit if you were doing modifications downtown. So whether or not these got adopted or not, the process is still what it is. So that, it wouldn't exempt anybody currently. The, the new process would create a faster outlet. Okay, so, so just hearing that, if I were to just define what the purpose of design, of Design Principle 1 is, which is fundamentally about the quality and appropriateness of, of the theme of the design as it relates to the brand that is a little sweet in USA. Okay, so you think about something, I'll say, so like tourist trap is already a word that's in code. So that's one reason why that was considered, not to say that it's appropriate, but it, but it's already in there. So thinking about this, it's really about making sure that things are, that design that's produced, again, protects the authenticity of the brand and is appropriate. If you're okay with the discretionary element, but not the terminology. So if you're okay with, if you're okay with a board actually operating and being the standard bearer for what is good design, here would be maybe my take on an alternative, and this is what I have already suggested in conversation, which is to say, I don't think the point really is about tacky, garish, or amateurish. It's about the design that goes above and beyond, that becomes inappropriate. So if you're okay with a board, if you're okay with a board having the discretion to interpret what's appropriate, I would suggest terminology something like, instead of is tacky, garish, and/or amateurish in nature, it says, does not consider the Swedish concept of logom. And then you just define logom as not too much, not too little, just right. And then it's still discretionary, but it's temperate. It's just saying that if design isn't within this sort of middle ground, this very Swedish sort of temperate thing, and a board says and votes on it, hey, this is kind of too much, or on the opposite, this actually isn't a very good sign. It's maybe just a little bit not developed, like develop this idea a little bit more. It softens the terminology, but it maintains the discretionary elements of interpretation of appropriateness in the design principles. That would be maybe something I would suggest as a, not a policymaking body, but maybe it's a toned down version. It gets to the point of just maintaining quality design. I think that's really all I'm saying.
Add my two bits one more time. Again, I just want to say thanks for doing this. Whatever we end up doing, Jordan, I want to make sure you know that your fingerprints will be all over this, and we appreciate your efforts.
And they want to attack us or whatever.
Even though you may not be, maybe we may vote for it, I don't know. But I'm not going to give ahead of the council. But if it doesn't, I just want to publicly say thanks for your efforts in the, in the Design Board. But I think it's extremely important that we do pass something soon. Because I would hate to have served on that committee without any evidence.
We did lose a member of the committee because of a decision that happened recently, where they got enough, enough negative feedback from the community about their decision to approve something without guidelines, that they felt attacked. And they just left the board. That's actually where this conversation started, was when we lost a member. But to your second point, thanks. Again, I just, I work at the, at, you know, the pleasure and discretion and for the purpose of the public good. This is not about me, you guys are the policymaking body. So whatever you decide, of course, is wonderful. So I just, I hope, for my take, my take is just, it's really hard for, the Design Review Board says consistently just how hard it is to do their job without anything in place. So I think something at some point is appropriate if this isn't the version, I hope that's appropriate. If it's not the right version, it's okay.
Further questions for Jordan for me? Allow him to sit down. Okay, thank you, Jordan, for your efforts and for being here this evening. If, if Jordan was still going to be around for another month, we may, maybe would have delayed this for a meeting or something. But we appreciate his, all of his input because it was certainly important to have his input this evening since he's been so heavily involved. With that, council, you do have a recommendation in front of you. And at this point, you can continue to discuss or a motion, or if you have other ideas, possibly taking no action, whatever you would like to address.
I'm asking, I don't know what the best approach would be, but ideally, I, from my perspective, it would be great if we could just have the Design Review Board do it one more time, consider the, the input that was received, and then we, hopefully at that point, we'd be ready to come back in just a couple of months. But how do we get that message out from council that, if everyone agrees on what you're saying? You will, but if that were the case, how do we do that? Take no action, have a motion to take it back to the Design Board?
I, I think that the message would be relayed whether you take no action or whether you take. My, my impression is that either one of those, the taking no action is perhaps a softer approach. So if you weren't ready to fully adopt it this evening.
Just to point it back, I mean, isn't voting it down, tabling it, doing nothing, it's all the same outcome, right? It gets referred back to the committee when they so choose, they bring it back in front of us, is that accurate?
That is accurate. I, I do agree with some of the mayor that there's some level of policy in it. If you look back and you were to look back at the minutes, and you were to see the council took no action versus decided against it, for example, or tabled, then you could interpret those differently. But at the end of the day, you do arrive at the same, the same place.
And Robert's tabling it, is that different than just having a motion or not doing anything?
You could just do a motion to table it, or if you wanted to take no action, I would recommend just to consensus. That way you have two different ways to get to the, essentially the different ways. One, one, do a motion, the other, persuade your consensus.
But with tabling it without specific direction, or does the tabling require a specific direction from this line?
No, it does not require a specific direction. However, the council wanted to go ahead with that, to table it, if they wanted to just table it, or table it with the request to have a discussion with so and so, all of those are fine.
Zach, I believe that the difference between tabling and no action is that in a future meeting, a council member would need to call it back to the table. If it had been, you know, back.
Yes.
To an agenda item, right? As if it was, if there was no action, it would just come back at future meeting.
Right, so no substantive difference, minor procedural difference.
Yeah, because I think that that, and again, if you were to come to the conclusion that you wanted to take no action this evening, then we are able to place it back on the agenda at any time. And, you know, we're also able to ask for input from the committee when that's. Some differences that we might consider, Councilmember.
Well, for my, for what it's worth, that would be my preference to take no action.
I would agree with that consensus.
To take no action with no sense of direction, no back.
No, I think there should be a back to committee, or you just talk to them.
The direction will be there, I think, yeah. Yeah, I think that, first of all, all of you have made it clear that you believe that something needs to be passed. And so it would be, if you take no action, I believe it will be viewed as you weren't ready to take action in the way it currently sits. Could be additional work, recommendations, and then you have, it'll be brought up hopefully again in your future, as possible.
So do I need a recommendation, take no action, or just take no action?
Yeah, I'll tell you what, we've heard, you know, we are now open for motions. If there is no motion, we will, as taking no action. If you want to make a motion to table it, you can do that, if someone wants to make a motion to pass, you can do that.
Or you can make a recommendation that we take no action, and then the rest would concur, and it's, you say motion, then you have to take action.
If I, I didn't hear all of what you said, to make a recommendation to take no action, and all concur, then we're not taking action. So basically, if there's no motion made, we can take no action. So either motion, we have a motion, or no motion, then we take no action. So that's the basic form.
But you have to understand the consensus, I mean, it's a group going.
Yeah. And if there's any objection, we don't have a consensus.
So I think three people have said to table it. I'm probably the only person that's interested in just voting, and I don't feel like there's consensus, so I don't intend to make a motion if that helps. Phew, thanks for my guy.
Well, let's, you know, let's be honest here, we have, we have a group of citizens of the city that worked hard on this, and we appreciate it no matter what, because they've done an absolutely great job on a very difficult task. You know, tabling it makes me a little bit uncomfortable. I don't sense that the council is ready to pass it, so my suggestion to you would be to not take action, and it stays fully alive, and we'll be back.
I just, I just have one more comment. I mean, I, for those of you that weren't at the meeting, I mean, this committee was very solid around it. And I, I don't like the process of the council overruling the actions of a very deliberate and thoughtful committee that has worked months on this. So I just, I mean, I, I agree with, I mean, I don't disagree with the, with the sense of taking no action and postponing it. But I mean, I would encourage you to speak to the committee. They, they felt good about their work, and they were very able to defend it in a concrete way. So I just, like I said, I don't like, I don't like the having committees and then overruling it all the time. And I was on that committee, or maybe I'm a little personal, I was on that committee once and got overruled too. And it does just a little bit make you feel like, you know, I don't know, questions your, your part in the process.
Thank you, and that might be the, the argument to take no action, because you're not overruling. You're saying that at this moment in time, you're not ready to move forward. You're saying that at this moment in time, you're not ready to turn it forward.
And yet it does not provide a guideline about what we would like to see in terms of something that would then be reintroduced.
Well, I think she said the feedback would be taken to the committee. And we've been pretty clear the last two meetings what our issues were. I mean, our issue over the language. I mean, that, that was pretty clear, so.
We would call to staff to then take it back to the, to the commissioners.
Again, procedural, okay, so if it goes back, will there be an opportunity for further input from those that have expressed concerns, whether it's an individual council member or citizen, or are we going to open it up again to?
Those meetings were so good meetings.
The, the challenge we have a horrible meeting, though, here, is this one-way dialogue. Someone wants to come testify, they can say their piece, and they go sit down, and there's no back and forth with anyone other than the committee. And I thought that, that was part of the hamstring from six nights ago, the people testifying to say their piece, but then you're done, and then it's up to the people around the table to have that conversation. You couldn't play off each other. There's never a work meeting or a public input dialogue that I was part of anyway. And I'm just wondering if that type of thing can happen in the course of this.
There was a public input meeting, a community meeting at one, it was in June, I think, Jordan, yes. So we could certainly call another community input public meeting, you know, rather than a commission design, maybe more joint meeting, where it was more of a public input format and less of a meeting. It just delays the process a little bit, just procedurally, we would have to do that, and then we would have to have another Planning Commission, Design Review Board before it would then come back. So I just want to be clear about the process. And we'll be a little short-staffed, so.
Or we could just have those with comments get ahold of the board members individually then? Kind of, what's the best way to get your pickings to them for consideration?
There are, there are a number of ways we can do that. We can set up the, there's an online survey set up that we could extend. It's just, we just have to work through those issues in Jordan's absence. So it might take me just a little bit of time to work through those issues and, and, you know, being sure I have all of the correct lists and, and all of that. But Jordan has done an excellent job of setting that up and passing it on. So it would just need a little bit of work from me to, to move the process along.
Yeah, I think we're about there, just finish ones and stuff.
Okay, counsel, I think that you, and it appears to be consensus to take no action at this time, I think that you would be invited to add input to the city administrator and move forward. I think you can feel comfortable that this topic will not go away and we reconsider considering it again. But he's okay with that, we'll move on.
Mr. Mayor, as a member of the Design Review Board and the Planning Commission, I know the comment is over, can I ask a question?
You want to come on up to me?
Sorry about that. I'm Craig Lofton. I'm, I'm a member of the Design Review Board and the Planning Commission, and I do appreciate everybody's comments, and I appreciate everybody's comments on Tuesday. One clarification I would like to see the direction of, if I heard Brian writes, this evening, Brian was wanting to try to tweak the, the whole appearance guidelines thing in a different direction, which would be a lot more descriptive, instead of, instead of, instead of allowing the creativity and allowing the subjectivity to be there, because let's all, we, I think we all can acknowledge the subjectivity is always going to be there, no matter what you do. Up to this point, there's been no teeth to it, so you could tell somebody no and they can still go and do it. So I guess the question I have, and I've been sitting here listening, so I know that there will be direction coming back to those committees, and there's more than just me, and I think we'll, we can help and tell what we heard, but I think that, I think we're close. And I think it sounds like maybe we're close with some terminology, but I don't, I haven't heard this body say that they don't like the direction that the, the design guidelines are going. And I, I hope I'm hearing that right, because if, if I do, then I think we're pretty close. If we do want to go a different direction where we're being more descriptive, I think it would, it would take a much longer time to try to almost go back and redo this thing. I mean, you know, because I've worked in municipalities where they've got design guidelines that sometimes are so descriptive that they're nearly impossible to meet. Then they've got a much bigger process to go through and review and improve. So if you guys could maybe try to discuss that just a little bit and see if that's what you agree, then I think that would help give the, the two, the two, the two bodies a little more direction, so. Anyway, sorry, I hate it when I spoke out of turn, but I just.
Thank you, Craig. Thank you, Craig, and thank you for the guidance. Counsel, I think that in light of the time, we still have a couple items on the agenda, I would ask you to get your thoughts, your guidance, your gathering, and please feel free to send those to our city administrator. Okay, thank you, counsel. Thank you, Craig, and all of, for all of your hard work. Counsel, we now turn our attention to item 10A, which is the notice of intent to exceed the revenue neutral rate. And I'll call on David Haye, our finance director, and our city administrator is also going to be participating in that. Well, David.
Good evening, counsel. Good evening, mayor. So in 2021, the Council's legislature adopted Senate Bill 13 and House Bill 2104, which removed the property tax load and implemented revenue neutral rate. The revenue neutral is a mill levy that will generate the same amount of revenue that was levied the prior year. So in 2023, the McPherson County set the revenue neutral at 53.495, and the mill levy for Linsburg was 55 mils, which generated the 1.5 million in property tax revenue. The revenue mill levy with, from the county for the 2024 budget has been set at 52.003 to generate the same property tax revenue. The revenue neutral rate mill levy from the McPherson County clerk is based upon estimated property evaluations and not the final assessed property evaluations. So the estimated property valuation does not include property valuation appeals and protest. The final assessed property valuation released in November will include the outcome of those protests and appeals, and so therefore, there is a variation between the estimated and the final property valuation amounts. A notice to, a notice of intent to exceed the revenue neutral rate must be provided to the McPherson County clerk no later than end of business date July 20th, 2023. The current draft budget has been developed, proposes that the mill levy be set at 55 mils. This is 2.997 mils higher than the revenue neutral of 52.003 mils and is subject to council approval. The budget that staff has drafted with council's direction is conservative, yet realistic in today's volatile environment of rising cost of business and workforce challenges. The final budget adopted by the council cannot exceed the rate specified in the notice, but it can be less. So any property tax revenue generated over the rate in the notice must be returned to the property owner. This is why it is a prudent measure to file the notice of intent to exceed the revenue neutral rate. A revenue neutral rate hearing is set for Tuesday, September 5th at 6:00 PM in council chambers, and will be followed by the public hearing budget. The county clerk is responsible for sending notice to all Linsburg taxpayers at least 10 days in advance of September 5th stating that the city's intent to exceed the RNR with details of these hearings. And then we just provided a little history of where we have been and what our RNR was. And so our recommendation is a, a motion to approve and send to the McPherson County clerk, the notice of intent to exceed revenue neutral rate for the 2024 City of Linsburg budget.
Thank you, David. Do you have any that you'd like to add?
Um, I just wanted to note for Councilmember Vanderwig that you did include all of us in the case.
Oh, thank you. I appreciate that. Just, just to the, I, I, I see it now, but I didn't notice it because it was long before.
So I just want to point out that that draft budget is still being worked on. We will continue to discuss that as staff and with counsel if a special study session has been called for July 1st. And then we still have time to, to revise the budget, but we have set that mill levy at 55. And again, as David mentioned, you can go under that, but you cannot exceed that. So once we present that number to the county clerk, we have to meet that number. Anything over that, we have to refund to the taxpayer. So once we say 55, we need to stick to that and then work below as we work the budget.
And 55 was the cap last year. Correct. Okay, well, thank you for questions for David or our city administrator. Okay, thank you, David. Counsel, you have a recommendation in front of you for a motion to approve and send to the McPherson County clerk, the notice of intent to exceed the revenue neutral rate for the 2024 City of Linsburg budget. Is there a motion? So, we have a motion and a second. Do we need a roll call vote on this?
Uh, yes, we do.
Thank you. Thank you. Questions on the motion? Seeing no questions, we'll ask our city clerk to please call roll.
Councilmembers, Gavin?
Yes.
Vanderwig?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Bruce?
Yes.
Eagle?
Yes.
Presley?
Yes.
Furman?
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. Motion is approved. Thank you, Roxy, and thank you, David and Christie, for your work so far on the city budget for next year. Counsel, we'll turn our attention to item 10B, Hellings Fest Special Event Permit, and I will call on Roxy Shubert, our city clerk.
An application was received for a special event cereal malt beverage permit for October 13th and 14th from the Hellings Fest Committee. The location of the event will be the parking lot to the east of City Hall and on Lincoln Street for Saturday evening during the live music. The American Legion will be operating the beer garden for the committee. They will be checking the IDs and issuing whiskey and those patrons to enter the area. The requested hours of operation are from 9:00 AM to midnight for Friday, and then there's a typo, it's 11:00 AM to midnight on Saturday. And then Janelle Halsin, Tessa Peters, the co-chairs for the Hellings Fest Committee are here. If there's additional questions for them.
Thank you. Why don't you, would you two stand up just so we can, thank you for your effort this That is a tough job, and we appreciate all of your work, and we're really looking forward to Hellings Fest this year. Counsel, do you have questions for, we'll start with Roxy. Do you have any questions? Okay, we're seeing no questions. Counsel, the recommendation is a motion to approve the special event cereal malt beverage permit for October 13th through 14th, 2023, for the Hellings Fest Committee. Is there a motion to that?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Questions on the motion? Seeing no questions, I believe this one we can do with voice.
That's correct.
Great.
Well, it's good to have one of those. Counsel, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion appears to pass. Motion does pass. Thank you, counsel. Madam, we need an executive session, our administrator. Seeing no need for that, is there other business to come before the council this evening? Seeing no further business to come before the council this evening, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion, all in favor, city members saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. We are adjourned, thank you, counsel.